We'll move on to public hearing.
Item 6A, hold a public hearing and adopt resolutions approving FY 2019-20 operating and FY 2020 through '24 capital improvement program budget, approving city appropriations GAN limit for FY 2019-20, and approving the city's master fee schedule for FY 2019-20.
Mr. Finance Director, Mr. DiMartini.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is Keith DiMartini. I'm the city's finance director, and it's my pleasure to present an overview of the city's operating and capital budget for the upcoming fiscal year 2019-2020. The objective of the item before you this evening is to hold a public hearing and request that you adopt three resolutions. The first is to approve of the fiscal year 1920 operating and the fiscal year 2024 capital improvement program, or the CIP budget. Also requesting that you approve of the city appropriations or GAN limit for fiscal year 1920, and then also approve of the city's master fee schedule for fiscal year 1920 as well. So the agenda for the presentation this evening is I'll first provide a brief overview of the city's general fund operating budget, talk a little bit more about some of the reserves that we have in place and are projecting, an overview of the city's four enterprise funds and the internal service funds, a brief overview of the city's capital improvement program, vehicles and equipment purchases, the city's master fee schedule, the GAN limit. The staff report does articulate a few alternatives for you this evening, which I'll present, and then finally, the request to council on any questions that you might have this So first, just to provide a brief overview of where we've been so far to date. This process really does start at the beginning of the calendar year with the city manager's budget instructions that he provides to the city's leadership team with providing high level strategic direction on developing the budget proposals in line with city council priority areas. We then held a study session with city council on reviewing and confirming your priorities. We held that back in February. There were multiple weeks of staff putting together and developing budget proposals, and the first study session with council was held on May 29th of the city manager's recommended budget, where we held a retreat. We then came back for a second study session, which was held on June 11th, and here we are this evening requesting your approval. It's also important to note that our budget has already publicly been made available. It's on the city's website on a dedicated page, and the prior study sessions were recorded and they're made available on YouTube and are featured on Cable Channel 1. So the information is, has been available to the public at the time that it was recorded. So in response to council member O'Connell's request at the June 11 study session, I was able to gather the city of San Bruno's population data that goes as far back as 1990 and the city's budgeted full-time equivalent position information as far back as 1999. And I've displayed it here on this graph. So since 1999, the city's population has grown by just over 7%, while the city's position count has actually declined by a little bit more than 2% within that same time period. This results in fewer city staff to serve the growing city population. In the past three budget years, though, additional positions have been approved, as you can see on the chart on the far right. Census population data is not yet available in those years, so I'd be happy to update this graph with additional information each year, especially when more recent population data is made available. So just a really brief overview of the city's budget. Our total all-funds budget being proposed in 1920 is about $188 million. Of that, $50 million approximately is the city's general fund budget. The city does have a budgeted full-time equivalent position count of 267 positions. The CIP budget, which is very robust, which has over 120 projects in the budget, is approximately $92 million. So we are a small, but not so small, city when you look at some of these high-level numbers. Moving on to the general fund specifically, this chart here shows the fiscal year 1819 adopted, amended, and the estimated ending balances in the fund and what staff is proposing in next fiscal year's budget. It's important to know that the revenues in the upcoming budget cycle are projected to grow at approximately 8% compared to the current year budget, while at the same time, the expenditures were only projecting to grow at 5%. So this is in line with council priorities and the city manager's directions and guidance to staff about maintaining a status quo budget and really looking at minimizing any expenditure increases if we can control them. The $2 million deficit that's been spoken of earlier does include a number of enhancement requests that council adopted as part of the current fiscal year budget and a few changes that were made during the operating year to appropriate available fund balance in the general fund during that time. So as you can see in the 1920 budget, operating revenues are just over $50 million, with operating expenditures just slightly over that, resulting in a net operating deficit of just over $376,000. And council did provide direction to staff to see if we can go back and identify ways of achieving a balanced operating budget for fiscal year 1920. And so this slide is a summary of the proposed strategies that staff have developed to address that deficit. There are several one-time expenditures that are being proposed to be funded using available fund balance in the general fund, which is a common best practice for funding one-time items coming out of fund balance. These items include about, include $150,000 in the streets division for funding to replace currently out-of-compliance traffic signs. In the current fiscal year, there approximately 700 will be replaced, but there are a total of 2,700 citywide. So this is, this will be money that will be used for that. The proposed budget also includes just over $58,000 of one-time service level enhancements. An example of that is the ADA transition plan. And then also, at city council's request at a prior study session, staff is going to include a $75,000 allocation, an enhancement request for wildfire mitigation that will be placed in the Parks Department. So with that, the revised operating deficit is actually a little bit higher at $451,000, but when you adjust by taking out the one-time enhancements that we are proposing to be funded by fund balance, the adjusted operating deficit is just over $167,000. So in order to address this deficit, staff are recommending a reduction to the general fund expenditures through reducing services. And this will take the form of delaying the hiring of the building assistant planner, the community development technician, the parks and facilities services manager, and the central garage mechanic, which are four position enhancement requests that are before you in the fiscal year 1920 budget. The delay of hiring will achieve some salary-infringe benefit savings. And then also, during the year, through just natural turnover and attrition that the city would experience, staff will hold those positions vacant for between up to one, up to three months longer than we would normally want to hire them. So we will delay the hiring of positions that do become vacant, and we will achieve over $100,000 of savings by that action. So with those service level reductions, we are proposing to balance the budget to zero. So the next slide is a summary of the reserves in the general fund. We presented this at the study sessions, and it's important to note that the proposed budget does assume meeting all of the reserve targets in the city's reserve policy that council has adopted. The only change from what was presented in a prior study session is that the assumed minor increase in the general fund balance from the first, from the first line, from those service level reductions that I just spoke about, will actually increase the fund balance by just over $167,000. And so the fund balance will increase to just over $2.2 million in 1920, which is just over $700,000 more than the $1.5 million target in the reserve policy. So moving on to the four enterprise funds, just a high-level summary table of what the beginning fund balance is projected to be in the water enterprise at just over $26 million. Through the, through the utility fees that are charged for the utility payers for water service and any capacity charges for hookups for new projects coming online are the revenue sources in the enterprise fund, just over $16 million. Total operating expenses are just under, just over $10 million. That leaves a surplus in the operating, in the operating pot, so that the water enterprise can use that for its very robust and aggressive capital improvement program. You can see the capital improvement budget is over $18 million, bringing the fund balance actually down to $14 million compared to 28, to where I projected to be at $26 million by the end of the current fiscal year. The wastewater enterprise has a very similar operating model. Again, most of its revenue comes from utility payments for wastewater services, as well as capacity hookups for properties. You can see that the operating revenues are well above what's necessary to sustain the operations, but again, that money is used for the robust capital improvement program that's detailed in the capital improvement program pages in the, in the, in the budget before you. The stormwater enterprise, as we've talked about in the study session, has its challenges. Unfortunately, there is not adequate dedicated revenue coming into the stormwater enterprise fund to sustain not only the operating expenses just to maintain the compliance standards, but also to fund any capital improvement projects. I mentioned before that any capital improvements for stormwater have historically been funded by the city's general fund capital reserve. This will be an area of concern in the upcoming budget cycle and going forward that I articulated on the five-year financial plan slides during our study sessions. And in the fiscal year 2021 budget, we are projecting to run a negative fund balance. So this will be an area of review in the upcoming budget cycle going forward. For the cable enterprise fund, you'll, you'll see in the fiscal year 1819 amended budget column that there was an ending fund balance of negative $27 million. We've corrected that substantially in the proposed budget before you by defunding the fiber to the home, the citywide fiber to the home project. As we mentioned earlier, there was no dedicated revenue to actually fund that project in the 1819 budget. So in the 1920 budget, we are proposing to defund that project and then bring it back to you at a later time if and when the city has, is able to identify a dedicated funding source, so we can appropriate the expenditure for that project at that time as well. It's also important to note here that we are projecting that the cable enterprise will come in at budget for its operating budget by the end of fiscal year 1819 due to many of the great work that the cable department has done with renegotiating a number of their contracts and, and creating a new rate card that meets many of the customers' needs and has higher margins for the business. You'll actually see in the fiscal year 1920 proposed budget that there is a small operating surplus that's being projected at $469,000. So moving on to the internal service fund, service funds, this is a slide that was presented at a study session as well. Important to note here that we are using available fund balance in one of the city's funds to transfer into the central garage, building and facilities and technology internal service funds in order to meet the, the target reserve requirement set in the city's reserve policy. The city has not historically been able to do that, and the city manager's budget before you is proposing to do that. And we feel that it's important that these funds have adequate reserves in the case of an emergency or something comes up during the operating year. Staff want to be able to address it as quickly and expeditiously as possible. So here's an overview of the city's CIP budget for 1920. Overall, the CIP budget has over 120 projects that benefit all those who work, live, and play and visit in San Bruno. There are some very small-scale projects and very, very large, complex infrastructure projects detailed in the CIP. Overall, you will see carryforward appropriations from prior fiscal years, as well as new funding requests in fiscal year 1920 on this slide. You'll also see a lot of the CIP information that was articulated in the prior enterprise slides as well. After the city council received the proposed budget at the study sessions, there were a few changes that were made to the CIP budget, which I wanted to make sure that you were aware of. The city council did direct staff to include a $30,000 request for an agenda management system for the city clerk. Staff went back and reviewed that request and the scope of that and have, have confirmed that the funding is already available in one of the CIP projects that's already in the CIP budget called the Agenda Preparation and Document Management Solution project. There is adequate funding already in that project for the agenda management system, so there is no need for a specific appropriation request or a new CIP project in order to accomplish that. There's also a $25,000 appropriation for roof and grandstand improvements at the Tom Lara Field using the general fund capital reserve. So we have created a new CIP project for that. The total project cost is approximately $175,000 to complete that project, with the remaining $150,000 not currently identified. It's important to note that the interior improvements of that project are funded by the San Bruno Lions Club and the San Bruno Community Foundation. And then two changes to water and wastewater first. In the water main improvement and replacement program for avenues 4-2, there was a $2.2 million request that was included in the fiscal year 2023-2024 fiscal year. We had included a design budget. This is the construction budget along with that project. And then finally, we delayed the initiation of the sewer main improvement and replacement program for avenues 4-2 just by one year, moving it out to fiscal year 2223. Those were the only changes made to the CIP budget from the last study session. A couple of weeks ago, staff included a new request in the equipment budget that was before you, using the general fund equipment reserve for $17,550 for new lights and ballast in Diamond 1 and Diamond 2 in City Park. These lights are in need of immediate repair, and there are, there are adequate funds in the equipment reserve fund to pay for this in the 1920 budget, so we've included that request here before you. And there were no other changes made to the equipment or vehicle requests that were presented at a prior meeting. So moving on to the master fee schedule, on the city's website is the city's master fee schedule. It includes all the fees that the city charges for all different types of services and work. It's important that the city council does receive an annual update on the schedule, and during the budget process, there's a resolution approving of the fee schedule again. The only recent updates that have been made to the fee schedule were to include the new development impact fee program. Those fees took effect on May 1st. The city updated the master fee schedule and did post that on the, on the city's website. There are no updates to any fees being proposed in, in coordination with the proposed budget at this time, and that's because the city, city staff are, are, are working currently on a user fee study that we've talked about with you before with a consultant, and we are planning on bringing forth a comprehensive review of the city's fee schedule to make sure that our fees are cost-recoverable and address some policy considerations for council in the December-January timeframe. So we will be coming back to you at that time for potential changes to the fee schedule. The GAN limit, voters approved Proposition 4 and Proposition 111, known as the GAN initiatives, which places a limit on the amount of tax-generated revenue that a local agency can receive and appropriate each year. The limit's based on actual appropriations from fiscal 1978-1979, and it's adjusted each year by cost of living and population growth assumptions. Only revenue defined as proceeds as taxes, which in San Bruno are property tax, sales tax, transient occupancy are the hotel tax, and business taxes are restricted by this limit. And as shown in the detail in the attachment to the staff report, the adjusted fiscal year 1920 appropriation is well below the limit, so we are in compliance with, with the law. The staff report does articulate a few alternatives for council to consider. You can this evening amend the appropriation amounts contained in the proposed budget at the time you choose to approve the budget, if you would like. You also can choose to not approve of the proposed budget before you. That would be, that would become effective on July 1st. In this case, you can adopt an alternate resolution assuring continued municipal operations. There is a resolution in your packet this evening, which, which is your ability to act on if you choose to do so, and that alternate resolution is there. So those are the two alternatives that, that I prepared for you to consider. So my request to council again this evening is to adopt resolutions. The first is to adopt the resolution appropriating for the operating budget and the capital improvement program budget with these three changes that I've spoken about this evening. First, to include an additional enhancement of $75,000 for fire mitigation and to include service level reductions, reducing the general fund budget by $167,764, and then also include an additional capital improvement program project for $25,000 using the general fund capital reserve for the Tom Lara Field grandstand improvements. And then also approve of the, of the GAN limit for fiscal year 1920, as well as the master fee schedule for 1920. Now I'll turn it over to the city manager for some closing remarks.
All right. Thank you, Keith, for going through the details of the budget. To the mayor and city council, I want to say it's been my pleasure as your city manager to lead the development of this budget process. Tonight is the culmination of a lot of work on staff's part, on your part, and so I want to just thank everybody for that effort going into it. I also want to just repeat the number that Steve mentioned, $188 million, and that's what this budget represents. It represents $188 million that you would be authorizing to expend over the next 12 months to both support and protect the community of San Bruno. That includes funding for 264 full-time employees and over 90 part-time staff that work throughout the year to provide services that we know from our recent survey that this community really desires and, and values. So we also know that this budget was not an easy budget to come up with. Kind of my tagline that I created and have repeated throughout this process is, "Our budget is stable, but it is not sustainable." And we certainly know that from our budget retreat and your direction that you gave at the very last time we met, which is, you know, $2 million deficit. Last year, we were able to bring that down in the proposed budget to $376,000, and you said, "You know what? We want to live within our means, so go back and sharpen your pencils." And so the information that Director DiMartini presented to you tonight is that pencil sharpening? I kind of joke, "We didn't use pencils because we don't use those anymore. We, we use spreadsheets." But we did. We certainly took your direction. And this budget is in line with the city council priority focus areas that we talked about back in February, and those priority focus areas are to continue to make progress on our transit corridors plan and revitalize downtown, rehabilitate community facilities and infrastructure, grow our city revenues and ensure continued economic vitality, strengthen community connections and engagement, improve the quality of life and protect the safety of this community, proactively plan for the future of this community, and last but certainly not least, ensure the continued organizational health and success of the organization. And that is that 264 full-time bodies and the over 90 part-time staff. So there's some good news in this budget. We've had steady growth in our revenues and our local economy is strong, and so that, that 8% growth factor that the director talked about is true, and that's something that we should all be proud of. However, we do still have challenges. We have challenges in our general fund and challenges in a number of our enterprise funds, and so we have embarked on this year in a multi-year, multi-pronged effort to take a look at fiscal sustainability. And we didn't get into this position that we're in with significant financial challenges and deferred maintenance in one year, and we can't climb out in one year, but we have made a lot of progress. Coming up on next month will mark just over a year that I will have served as your city manager, and I am proud of everything this organization has been able to accomplish in these 11 months. And one of our biggest challenges has been our cable enterprise, and we took your direction, which said, "Look into the cable enterprise and find a path forward." And we did that through providing you with a business plan, but we did more than that, and you deserve the credit because it was your prodding to take a look at the annual, the monthly deficit that we were running in the cable enterprise. And there's a lot to be proud of. What is the first thing you do when you find yourself in a hole? Stop the digging. And so we were losing money every month in the cable department, and with the budget before you, we, we will no longer be doing that, and we're on the path to recovery there. And so we went through that in detail at the retreat, and I won't repeat it here, but there's a lot to be proud of on the progress that we've made. Going forward, we will have challenges over the next few years in attaining a balanced budget. We have been talking about revenue augmentation measures, both potentially putting something on the ballot, but also growing the revenues we have now, and we have a number of efforts currently underway, be they a audit of our TOT transit occupancy tax, be that, be that an audit of all of our businesses that pay a business license. And so those efforts are ongoing, and we have embarked on a process to do everything we can to develop, one, a balanced budget, two, to make enhancements that are critical for the health of the organization and services to this community, and three, to continue to make progress on achieving fiscal sustainability, which is the goal that you have set and something that this organization has really picked up. And so we are here tonight to answer any of your questions, but again, I just want to thank you for this process and the in-depth learning that has been shared, I think, both from us, from you, and providing a lot of detailed information that we were able to give and provide to you in that all-day retreat earlier this, this month. So we are here. The proposed before you, the proposed budget is before you, and that concludes our staff presentation.
Thank you both. Thank you, Mr. DiMartini, for being here and the presentation, and to you and your staff for preparing and putting the budget together with the senior leadership team and all their work and effort. With that, this is a public hearing, so I'd like to see if we have any speaker cards.
We do not.
Is there anybody here who wants to speak on this item? If we close public hearing, you'll be precluded from speaking later. Seeing no one, any action?
I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion made in second to close public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 5-0. Okay, now we'll bring it back to council for questions, comments, or both. Do the chair.
Oh, go ahead.
Then Laura.
So just a comment for staff. So thank you, Joan, for all the effort on this, and Keith, I know that you, and the rest of the leadership team, you guys put a lot of time and effort into this, and I just wanted to comment that, you know, we, we asked and you delivered, so you brought us back exactly what we asked for, and I do certainly appreciate that. I know it took a lot of, of creative maneuvering and last-minute, you know, adjustments to make it happen, but you, you brought us back exactly what we requested, and so just wanted to thank you for that. The only request I have going forward, I, I do still want to make sure that at some point in the coming year, we go back and, and review our reserve policy, because I do think we are still a little deficient in that. So, you know, as we move forward, I know there's, you know, nothing left over this year, but going forward, when we do have some surplus, I want to make sure that we start socking away a little bit more to take care of some of those longer-term needs that are still unmet.
Noted. Laura?
To the chair. Great job, you guys. Great job by all from the senior leadership team. I appreciated the retreat that we had. I think that was an impressive day, excellent presentations, and so much work leading up to that, and so I know that that doesn't, that is not easy. I felt like going through the city budget process last year, my head was just spinning and trying to make sense of it, but I think, Keith, this year, you did a fabulous job, and, and all your presentations have really been spot-on. Irene, thank you for the request. I'm looking really at the city population and employees. It's a really good, it's an impressive slide, and it really tells you a lot about what we do with so little, even though things continue to grow in terms of population, so I appreciate that as well. You know, I think city managers did it very well, right? You know, this is, this is just... You know, this is a good budget, but it's, can we sustain this? And, you know, this is actually, I feel this is, can we just pause this and freeze this time, right? Because we're already a good place. And what's to come in the coming years, whether it's employee benefits, contracts are expiring, and as you mentioned, a number of different things, actually scares me going forward in terms of how we balance the budget, right? Because things are continuing to grow. So, you know, the team, whether it's the council and staff is all, we're on the same page when working toward the same goals. And I think that we've clearly identified important goals in terms of looking at different revenues. And Keith, the work that you've done in reviewing different programs and, you know, even saying, gee, what are we doing and are we making money doing this? And does it make sense to approve a master fee schedule today with all the little details and go through and increase these line items without really stepping back and making sense of that and raising it to costs it really should be? And thank you to the cable in terms of the changes and the strides that you've made. And I know that's been some huge effort. So I think my questions have been answered, and a couple of the comments that I have, and thank you to Mayor Medina for requesting some details on the community day in the park. You know, one of the quick things off the top, I would say, is I'd like to think about maybe trimming some of the costs when just the rides. And I know that, you know, it's an expensive thing for the city and to have the impact that it really could. Could we come back next year with a little bit different spin on it, do a lot of some of those same things, but do more carnival games that are less expensive, that get more kids to participate? I just noticed on community day, you know, walking around, and I see a lot of little kids that just can't get on those rides. And there's a lot of money spent, and it really can't address the vast majority of those kids. And they stand in long lines, and there's really not a lot for them, but it's a big expense. And I know that rides are very expensive. So it'd be great maybe to get more groups together to come out and maybe sponsor a booth. Maybe the council can sponsor a booth, and we can have a, I don't know, throw a pie at the council member, I don't know. But maybe we could use something that is less expensive. So looking at ways to cut costs, because we don't know whether or not some of these revenues are coming in, will continue to come in, whether, you know, we're going to get X amount of dollars from certain donations, or whether those funds can't go towards something else. So if we can cut some costs, I'm looking forward to that. I also have concerns in the recreation department in terms of hiring a new manager. I think that that's an important piece. I know that it's an overwhelming department, and we do need that position. I'm concerned about getting the work done. So I struggle with that one, and I'll wait to hear more from other council members. And the other area that I struggle with is, and I've shared my comments with, as well as with the manager, about the full-time maintenance person. And, you know, I would love to say, can we approve a position which is temporary, reassess that whole department, and then move forward with a permanent position? So I'd like to get more discussion from council on that item as well. And those are my concerns. Thank you.
When you say maintenance...
The full...
Mechanic?
Mechanic, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Well, there are two. Facilities and parks and recreation, and then mechanic.
Okay. We're here. Okay. Are there questions or comments from council? Irene, or Marty, who was?
Still writing a note.
Okay.
Irene?
I too think the presentation was impressive, all of them, all the study session, the session last time at the city council meeting, and this one. So I really appreciate it, and thank you. And thank you for having it all online so people can really dive into it. So that was impressive. I appreciate you trying to sharpen your methodical pencil and cutting the budget down. I have two concerns with that, though. I know it takes a long time to hire anyone. The process itself is long, and sometimes because of that, let me, we have in the past lost people that we would have hired. So I'm concerned that delaying hiring the people in the, yeah, all the different, I think it was, you were going to delay them for three months. I'm concerned we're already, you know, it already takes so long. If we delay it even more, we're not going to have the quality people apply that we would want to have. So I would urge the council to rethink that piece. It's, I think it was $57,000, a relatively small amount in a $188 million budget. So I'd like to not delay those hirings. That's one. And I just want to reiterate what you all said about the storm drains and the compliance with the state regulations. They're getting more and more stringent. The compliances, the method of complying with those regulations are getting more and more expensive, and it's just overwhelming. So I know we're going to be looking at that. I know we're going to have a lot of input later, but I just want to reiterate what you've already said already. And again, thank you for adding that slide about the population. It's fascinating to look at. Thank you.
Marty?
Yes. Thank you, Jovan. Thank you, staff. I feel right now with our budget, it's this opportunity to kind of take this breath and kind of just, before we move forward with these additional costs and getting things balanced, is an opportunity to do that. Yet I still want to emphasize the appreciation and the need for these different positions. And I have struggled with, when we have a new city manager who's telling us something that we really, really need something, not only in these meetings here in public, but in our one-on-ones, it's a very convincing argument. So I appreciate the timeframes that were shifted around to allow this to occur. But we have a responsibility to pass a budget now, and I think that's something perhaps that we can come back to and talk about that later, about dealing with the hiring timing. I'm most convinced that the parks' facilities manager is something that should be sooner than later. I was not convinced on the mechanic. I would have appreciated to hear a little bit more about efforts to get the basic services conducted through outside vendors for oil changes and the like. I think, I'm hoping that something could still be looked at there. I do appreciate hearing from our community development director, Darcy Smith, and the need for the staffing there. But I think it comes down to, we really have to try to do better into living with what's coming in and what's going out, to try to have that balance. And we're not going to be able to do that easily in the future without some enhancements. And I'm just glad that we can get this budget out and then move forward to figure out how we're going to fund all the necessary work. I'm not happy with higher water and sewer rates like everybody else, but if you look into the budget, that money is being spent at a high rate to replace the failing, aging infrastructure in our city. And if I'm not, maybe somebody could help me here in staff about how many pump stations have been replaced, how many offsets in our sewer have been repaired. That's important, I think, to help the public understand that their dollars, those rate increases were necessary to catch up to the increasing costs that will continue going I am just amazed that in a short amount of time in our cable enterprise that we've been able to turn that around by going back, as has been said, renegotiating contracts, cutting some services. It's in one of our staff reports, and there was reduction in service. How do we move forward with balancing things if our revenues aren't keeping up, or in this case, they are, 8% increase in our revenues and 5% in our expenditures? Yet we still have a long way to go to get things fixed in our city, the city that we all want. One of the biggest things, and I think you're seeing in the surveys, is people are concerned about when are they going to get their street paved? And it's going to cost us millions of dollars. And at the rate that the money's coming in, it'll be many, many years. And getting that year to be able to tell an individual property owner of their street so that we could show them based on what we're getting in now, it's going to take 15 years, maybe, to get there? I don't know. Whatever it is, I think it's important for our public to know. So with the cable, I wanted to make sure, because somebody did ask me about this, that defunding doesn't mean that we're not going forward with the cable enterprise. And I was wondering if staff could give a really short status update on where we are with the financing for that and when that plan could come back to council for us to make some determination.
Sure. Jovan Grogan, city manager. I'm going to answer the first part, which is what does defunding mean? So the action that we're proposing that the city council take in the budget is more of a accounting/budgetary entry than actually taking $10 million away that was funded of the project. When the $10 million was approved in the 1819 budget, the city was going to go out and look for financing mechanisms to fund that $10 million. And so it would essentially be new revenue that would come in, in the form of some sort of bond or debt financing. And so we are still very much looking into all avenues to fund the project, either all at one time or to phase it. That work is ongoing. And so we do plan to finalize that work and bring options to the city council, at which time we would then request an appropriation. But we want it to complete that work versus continue what is approved in the current year's budget, which is a $10 million where the funds have not yet been secured.
Thank you for that. I also want to thank you for the fire mitigation that was budgeted. And then again, it's another example of, well, there's $75,000 budgeted. Well, it's likely going to cost much more than that to get everything, all our open spaces, all our wildfire mitigated, our areas mitigated. So I also wanted to piggyback on Councilman Salazar's request to reexamine the reserve Councilman O'Connell's point on the storm drains, it's a huge problem that is not going to go away anytime soon, and we'll have to find a funding mechanism for that. I do have one modification that I would like to bring to the council's and staff's attention for consideration. There's a project on page 368, project 82106. I'll give everybody a moment to catch up to that. And basically what this project is, is to design and construct garbage and recycling privacy screens at our public parking lots. This project was, according to this report here, was identified in fiscal year 2014 and '15 for $100,000 allocated. That's page 368. And I think that that money would be better suited to stripe parking lots, specifically the one here at the senior center, also to be used for striping the Bel Air or Lionsfield parking lot. If anybody's been down to Bel Air, that pavement marking is gone, and so it's really crammed in parking situation over there. And I believe in when we try to do something new, that we should find a way to pay for it, and I think this is one way to do it. If we haven't, if we're not really planning to deal with this garbage and recycling screens on our parking lots, then we should just go ahead and just say we're not going to do it and use that money for striping things that are definitely going to be needed today. And we can move forward with that. So that's my one request that the council consider while we're dealing with the budget.
Irene?
I just, that was a budget request that I made in 2014 in response to people complaining about the trash that gets left and is unsightly in the public parking lots, especially behind San Mateo Avenue. And that was why it was put in there. It's never progressed because there was no funding for it. So it's just been, as far as I remember, a placeholder for that. So, you know, that's, I don't even think there's real money for it. I think it's just something that was put in there because I wanted it to happen, and it never did.
Got it. It does say estimated carryover, so I think money's there unless there's a typo here. I don't know.
So...
City manager?
So that is a project that was requested, and it is under the purview of the community development department. And this is, unfortunately, I think, a prime example of a funding request with a need but without the staff to execute it. And so the project sat for a while. And we did not recommend defunding that project in this budget. One of the things we need to do is go through our projects and, as we have more staff, as we get through our projects and figure out, okay, when can we get this project done and does it need additional funding? I will note, at a high level, one of the things that we did do with this budget, and it was in one of the slides at the retreat, is that when you take a look at the, in total, the amount of money that was authorized for new projects in this year versus prior years, it was lower this year. That was a conscious effort because we did not want to allocate new money for projects that we knew we would not get to. What we wanted to do, because we know that we already have a backlog of funded projects that we have not been able to get to. And so absolutely, we need to look into this project and likely others as we have the staffing and the resources to execute on them. If the city council would like to make a strategic decision to tell us, you know what? This was a request in. We do not want you to do any work on this, and we want to apply those funds somewhere else, we can totally make that decision tonight. Or we could go back and return to you at a later date with a plan for this project and others.
Marty, you have other questions, comments?
No, that was it. I just, I don't know if it's an error that if money's been expended out of the project that it means that the money was there, but...
No. It was likely initial planning work, but there is not an error. There is $98,000 left in that project that has not been spent.
Right. So I, we need to stripe our parking lots, and I guess if the council does agree, I think it's a lot quicker to stripe parking lots than design and construct garbage screens. So I think it's a great idea, just that at some point, we need to put paint on the street, paint on the pavement. So I'll leave it for the council to decide if they want to do that in this budget or later, but it needs to get done.
Barrett, in regard to striping our parking lots, all the lots downtown have recently been redone. The parking lot in the senior center is an active project, and I can have staff get up, if you'd like, a status on where that project is. But the parking lots downtown have all recently been repaved. The one that actually was being restripped yesterday is the one closest to the plaza because that was being used by the plaza during construction. But I think if they're not done today, within the next few days, all the parking lots downtown will have been restripped.
Barrett, is there any plan to stripe the baseball Lionsfield?
I can't answer that at this point. And we can certainly investigate this project and potentially defunding it and applying the money to another Measure A eligible expense that may be striping at a recreation field, and it may not be allowed for that. So we would need to look into that before making that decision tonight.
Thank you.
Maybe on a suggestion of that, since some of the striping is being done, or as the senior center actively, because Marty, you pointed out one item, like you said, can those resources be spent for something that's going to get initiated quicker? But I think, City Manager, you brought up about can come back in looking into the Measure A versus where we're at two, but you also talked about reviewing a little bit as well, the others. And I'm thinking if we're going to take a look at one, we should be more global and look at, look at them all and say, well, should this project be discontinued? And maybe we didn't see it on the first time to be defunded, and then something else should be allocated to it. So maybe, would that be helpful with us getting those other answers?
Sure. We'll go back, we'll take a look at that project, and we'll look at other projects that could either be de-sculpted or defunded to apply funds to other projects.
Marty, what do you think of that?
That's fine, thank you.
Thanks. Anything else, Marty?
No, that was it. That was it.
Thank you. So for myself, I'm not going to go into great detail because I think a lot of folks have said things from Michael, as far as the reserve policy agree. You know, another colleague, as far as trimming the cost of community day, because in essence, now seeing the full figures, you know, we may have, what was it, $26,500 for rides, and we got a little over $10,000 for wristbands. So in essence, that's the expenditure. The community day, as far as allocation from the foundation, is a $30,000 element, which is gone, which will be going away. So, you know, will we be able still to have that? We have staff expense. What I do appreciate is it gave a very big picture to all costs that were tracked, as far as overtime, extra staffing, porta potties, a stage, ice, it was very detailed. And so what wasn't tracked at all last year, there was one or two items, but they were certainly tracked this year, which gave a very big picture to that. But again, what I worry about too, was we're spending about $27,000 on rides and having it more of a carnival atmosphere might be of help, as we did at the Centennial. Also, if the weather were to go south that day, we may not have a lot of takers who want to buy wristbands, or if they hadn't already. So I just worry a little bit about that. So the trimming element, I think there are things. You know, do we need a stage? We had it in the Centennial, but is it necessary today? Does it get the use for the monies that we're spending? I also had two areas, and they were already echoed. One was the mechanic, and one was in the parks facility manager. I'm going to say what one colleague said here too, is that, you know, the manager and department director has made a, I won't say passion, I'll say, a statement of what needs and what is lacking. So, you know, for me, it was a no. For me, I'm a little bit more on the fence, but I still have some concerns as well, and I've expressed those to the city manager as well, so it's not the first time he's heard that. To be candid and upfront, I think that's what makes us work well together as a team, is having that. So those are my initial comments. And also with Irene, as far as the storm compliance, that's something we keep bringing up, but we know is getting closer, and it's not going to get easier. And the cost isn't going down either. So those are some of my initial comments on things that were mentioned. But also, you know, I think it does need to be echoed, Sunday, to you and your team. You know, I love saying this is the first time in how long that you're going to see that the cable department is balanced, as far as, not in the deficit category, but as far as its operating. That is through diligence and effort of going back and trying to figure out ways in which to save. I also know that your department, along with the finance director, have been very conscientious as you're finishing out this budget cycle, as far as expenditures and insuring and changing and making such a change in a short time, that those things don't turn around that quick normally. So it's a compliment to both of you and to all your team that they're doing. The internal fund revenues, I mean, that's a positive too, as well as meeting that obligation. So there are some positives. It is a tight year. And it's, you know, as years progress, we still have to be mindful. I think also it talked about when we have amendments to the budget and the quarterly reviews that the finance director brings forward, that we want to have the bottom line of where we're at. So we don't want to just know where the amendment, where it's going. We want to know the true, are we in a deficit? Are we in the positive? What are the projections? As you very closely and detail watch this, and I know you do that very diligently. So with that said, those are some of my comments. I'm going to continue to echo what my colleagues have said. But there are a few things, I'm going to assume from council, that as far as approving the city appropriations for the GAN limit, I don't know that anybody has any concerns or questions specifically to that. I'm wondering if on approving the city's master fee schedule, if anybody has any concerns or questions on that.
Through the chair?
Yes.
Only concern on that one, the staff report indicated there was an attachment with specifics on it. That attachment wasn't in the report, so, and I know there weren't, there wasn't probably a whole lot to report in there anyway, but if we are going to reference an attachment, maybe we can make sure that gets into the final posted packet. That's it.
Fair point. Then we also obviously have the operating budget and the CIP budget. In addition with those are enhancements. So what I'd like to see is if we can build consensus, and so we'll have fewer motions, and so we have, because we have truly one resolution. So we can go at it different ways. If on the operating budget itself, if you want to take enhancements and have discussion on a couple of the items that I heard, if we're okay with the one time, we can all concur to that. And those are the one time, not the ongoing costs. So I'm looking for any thoughts. I want to make sure everybody has to be heard and, you know, we're building consensus on this.
Through the chair, I think you've made some good suggestions and maybe getting a vote on some of these things I think we all have consistent comments on. But I do like the idea of maybe breaking it down from one-time costs into individual enhancements that are ongoing.
Through the chair?
Mike?
Just to state a sort of different position on that. This budget, I believe, has been, in terms of preparation, the one that we've spent more time on than any budget as far back as I can remember. And we've had so many opportunities to go back and comment and adjust and pivot. So personally, I'm, you know, I think that we've had more than enough opportunity to pick it apart and to kind of, you know, interject things. I get really concerned when we start making last-minute adjustments up here. I think you stated very well, Mr. Mayor, that, you know, making the project-specific decisions up here would be very difficult because we're looking at one specific project which could potentially impact other projects. And if we're going to reprioritize, we really should look at the whole portfolio of projects and figure out maybe from a policy standpoint, if there are certain types of projects that we would want to address above others. And I think that would be a more appropriate decision for the council to make, rather than start, you know, looking at individual projects and making, you know, independent decisions on one or the other. So I personally would be okay with just doing, just moving that we approve the budget as it's presented and not picking it apart. And another reason why I say that is, I think, I believe last year, we decided to break it apart, and then we still approved everything at the end, even after going through all these separate things, so.
That's why I want to build a consensus and not start going one by one if there's a couple.
Right.
Because I've only heard, I think, two, one thing was to go back, community day, and just kind of fine-tune it and just make sure that we're living within the means of the day. And I've heard two positions. Other than that, and council can correct me, aside from the one that Marty, you brought up, we're going to come back with, I haven't heard, I've heard, I think, except for two things, I think I heard everybody else concurring to everything, including the GANs limit and the master fee schedule.
Okay.
So we made progress from last year.
And to clarify, you mentioned it was one resolution, but I believe there were three resolutions, so we...
In the essence, as I was talking to the city clerk, is that we made a lot of motions last time to the main resolution, and it just kept going and going and going, like you indicated.
Yeah.
Instead of just saying, okay, what are we down to? If it's two things, let's talk, and if not, let's move.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Perfect, all right.
Yeah, thank you, very much.
So let's get that consensus, thank you.
So...
Oh, no, I just want to kind of echo what Michael said, and we have to keep remembering, this is a document that we can amend and change at any time. But the deadline right now is to keep it going because the old budget ends June 30th, next, like Monday, the new budget has to start. So if we approve it the way it is, which is a zero deficit, it has the, and if you look on whatever page, it doesn't matter, so the, it has the enhancements of the fire mitigation requests that I think is an excellent idea that you had, Marty, and I think that's a fabulous thing to do. And it had the...
Laura Field.
The Laura Field, and it had a few other small things. But the bottom line is it's a zero operating, a zero deficit operating budget. And if we can all live with what is presented here, I can even live with the rest, and we can dig around with it later on. And I, are you moving that we approve the budget as it stands with a zero deficit and make modifications at a later point?
As long as my colleagues are okay with moving forward at this point, then I...
I will tell you, I'm still, I'm more on the, on the two positions, but mechanic is the specific one. And why, why I'm saying that, and I've explained that, is I think we need somewhat of a fleet study and to see the overall bigger picture again. Because I know we used to have four, we have two, we want to add one, but there were questions that came up and about our current fleet, what is done internally, what is done because of its technical element. So that is something, though, we've talked about having it delayed anyway, the position. So that's what I'm trying to figure in my mind too, what would best serve the city at this point, is an overall review of the fleet and what its needs and assessments are before applying a position of full time, which again, you can't go back in time and say, well, now that we've done that, we're going to take that back, unless it's through attrition.
Well, I'm sorry, I thought that this budget delayed hiring any of those enhancements, including the mechanic.
It does.
It approves him, but delays the hiring of him.
Okay, but we can delay the hiring of them?
Indefinitely.
Indefinitely. Or we can take them out.
Can we do that?
I mean, or we may have a conversation later and say, you know, community day, we should limit it to, you know, have a budget of $25,000, and, I mean, all those things can happen.
Jevon, it looks like you want to, go ahead.
Sure. So the proposed budget, as amended before you, includes the enhanced position, takes away the funding for those positions for six months, so we really could not hire them until January 2020. And so the position that the mayor talked about, which is the mechanic position, is one of those positions. If the city council desires to delay that position in favor of obtaining a fleet study, as the mayor suggested, that is something that would need to be funded. A fleet study, in my expertise, is about $30,000 to $40,000, having been a consultant that has done them before. Maybe it can be done at a lower amount, I just don't, I don't know until we go out and do the RFP. But that would roughly be the cost. I can't tell you that we could actually execute a contract and get it done in six months. We could certainly get it done in the fiscal year and return back to you with the assessment of that. But we would need to fund that with one-time money, and we could either do that tonight or we could do that at a later date.
So through the chair, I am in agreement with that proposal on that mechanic position. I have a hard time approving that position at this time, and I'd like to, I think, I'm okay with approving the budget as is, as long as we can talk about the permanent positions as they come back, and we would review those then.
I think we're going to need clarity. So when you say, are you talking about any of the...
I'm sorry, just the mechanic as well as the supervisor position, manager position in the Recreation Department.
The facilities?
Parks and Facilities.
It's the facilities manager, yes.
I'm in agreements, in agreement with that as well, personally.
All right, to make it really easy, I'll go ahead and agree with that, and then we'll have our three, and then we could just move forward, and we'll reevaluate at that point.
I'm not clear, though, what's being requested, that we're going to pull those positions out, or we're just going to revisit them at some point before they're hired?
Well, I would prefer to pull them out for now and not approve them with the budget until, A, we get a fleet study, I'm in agreement to that, and that's an important piece. I guess, let's back up a second. So I think Mayor Medina stated pretty well, you know, we're going to move forward with a full-time position. We're seeing our purse cost go up, we're seeing our healthcare cost go up. I, it needs to make sense that we're going to hire this full-time person. I know it seems like we need it, and I know that there is a few people doing that job, and we can't do it successfully, but what's the right solution? Because we, many, many different cities and many different companies do it differently, right? Somebody doesn't, somebody doesn't touch any of the work, right? Some send things out to get oil changes, some things get changed out to get smog tested, et cetera. So I'm looking to see what we can do that's most feasible, that's most economical. And we don't have the time right now to get that assessment to approve this budget. So I prefer for the mechanic position for that to be pulled until we can get that assessment. On the parks facilities person, it's again, for me, I think it's a facility that, it's a service that we offer to our community. It's not a necessity. It's not police, it's not fire, it's not streets, it's not sewer. And in some cases, maybe we need to make some more cuts, because we've got, coming up in this, end of the year, we've got contracts coming up. So I have a hard time hiring that manager. We want to talk about hiring somebody that's going to help maintain facilities and maintain parks or maintain weeds and things we can't get to, we keep putting off and off, that's a different thing. But I have a hard time with that position. I think that we should be able to try to do it with what we have right now. That's my position. So maybe we can come back and get a better assessment and a better understanding of that department and where the problems are, where the issues are. But there's been a long history of things changing and moving, and people getting increases, and I'm not happy with the department and where we're at today, asking for another position. So that's the clarification on those two.
And for me, similar on the mechanic, but I would say to bring back the parks facilities manager. I don't want to just see it go away without further discussion or clarification. In the past two budgets, I think they've been brought up, I believe, in the last two budgets, and I haven't supported that. I am more amenable, but I need to be a little more convinced. So I would want to, personally, I'd like to see it come back.
So Marty, from your standpoint, would you be okay with approving them and then bringing them back, or do you want to just see them eliminated for now?
I want to pass a budget. I want to do it responsibly. I believe a position is needed. Defining, defining what they're doing and the consequences of what happens to the person that's currently doing part of that work, or has that responsibility for doing that work, that needs to be ironed out for me. Based on what Laura was saying, I, I don't have a strong of, of an experience in the park and rec department. But when a park and rec commissioner tells me that there's something there that needs to be examined, I'm going to go along with that. If we, I just want to be able to come back, to be able to have a say in a few months from now of what that, what that final answer is going to be. To get the budget passed today, if it means pulling it and eliminating it, or does it mean that it'll be brought back to us at a later time, which is kind of almost the same thing, just that one's more drastic action of just saying we're going to cut. which is kind of almost the same thing, just one's more drastic action of just saying we're going to cut it. I believe that, I believe that position is needed in some form, just that I think I will need a little more information and data on it. But I, I hear our city managers' plea for necessity of that. So, I, I want to be mindful and of that, but I still need to pass the budget tonight. So, that's kind of where I'm at. I...
I don't know if he's... The question was, is, or do you want to have it pulled and brought back so that the rest of the budget can go forward? I think that was, was Michael or...
Really simple, would that, but the other option is what? What is our other option?
We approve it and just revisit it. Like you said, less drastic, but maybe gets us to the simplest.
Revisit it with our approval to, to, to here upon this matter. I'm willing to do that, too.
Through, through the chair, I think whatever decision is made tonight, we need to be very clear on the actions that will go forward. You guys are the elected representatives for this community. All we can do is give you our best professional judgment, and you make the ultimate decision on allocation of resources for the organization. The decisions that are before you appear to be, approve the budget as revised, which has the positions authorized, but funding beginning January 2020, which means that if either of those positions are approved, we would delay the recruitment, but we would start the recruitment, because they are authorized positions and aim to bring those bodies on by January. The other option is to not approve one or all of the positions, and we would not do any work to begin any recruitment on those positions. And we would then, because I think all of them are an absolute organizational necessity, bring you back additional information to provide additional justification. I would, I would, for, for the fleet position, I would certainly want to do that through a fleet study, because I, I think that is the best and most appropriate way to get you the answers that, that have been raised. For the parks and facility management, similarly, I would recommend, I would recommend an organizational assessment, because this position has been requested numerous years. The organizational structure that we have for our parks and facilities maintenance is not appropriate. And that is my professional assessment. That has been the professional assessment of this organization for multiple years now. We do not have a manager supervising our parks maintenance and our facility maintenance. We have supervisors and line staff doing the work. And so, to, to maintain our facilities, our critical facilities, and our community facilities and the appropriate manager, this organization has requested a, a management position. The city council can decide that we, that those resources are not allocated. And I think the next appropriate way to provide you with more information is to have an outside entity come out and do an assessment of the department, and provide the city council with benchmarking on how other cities are structured and how the work can be done for, for those two positions. Because I think the city council is asking questions that they are uncomfortable with the assessment that has been, that has been made, made by staff, and that is totally your right. And so, we need to provide you with additional information if you're not comfortable authorizing the positions.
And, and just to my colleagues, too, I think as we're discussing the positions, I think it's, it's not our place, or is it relevant about what we've heard, or what people say, or what gossip is, or whether you've worked here or not? That's, that's not relevant to the overall health of the organization. So, what I am suggesting, I'll just take the lead here. What I am suggesting is to have those two positions pulled out of the approval of this budget, to have more additional information brought forward, whether it's a fleet study or an assessment, and have those come back at a later time, but not to be included in the approval of tonight's budget. Does that, does that make sense?
If, if that is the direction, that is clear for the budget approval, and...
Because I know we're all asking each other, but that's, that's my feeling.
So, is that your motion?
Has anybody else had any other, I haven't made a motion in a while.
Well, Michael and I were...
Yeah, I mean...
So, we're, we're two people here, and then if, then we were waiting for Marty to decide which way.
Okay.
I, I appreciate the, the additional information. So, I'm willing to go along with that, that we go ahead and, as the mayor, as you said, and then it gets brought back. Now, are we approving the funding for those studies at this point?
No, because we don't know where that went from. Those would have to come back.
Okay, right, right, okay, all right. I, I thought the city manager did say...
Well, council has two choices. You can allocate money for, for the studies, or we can bring an item before you with the approximate cost of the studies and ask for an allocation at that time.
Okay. All right, I'm good.
Okay. All right, so, any action on the budget? We've heard each other. I don't know that there's more comments or anything, but, yes, Laura?
I'll motion to approve the budget with the two amendments to remove the position for the mechanic, as well as the facilities manager, until those can be brought back to council, requesting funding for an assessment, and then review and approval at a later date.
Second?
Yeah, okay. So, there's a motion made in second, and Melissa, do you want to read it back?
For clarification, is that an amendment, is that a recommendation, a motion for approving the fiscal year 2019, 2020, operating and fiscal year 2020, 24, capital improvement program budget as amendments are stated?
Yes, thank you.
Second, I'm still there?
Yes, 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 go ahead.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor O'Connell?
Aye.
Mayor Medina?
Aye.
Motion, Kansas.
All right, so now we're going to move on to the approving of the city appropriations GAN limit. Correct? And we'll need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor O'Connell?
Aye.
Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And finally, the city's master fee schedule.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor O'Connell?
Aye.
Mayor Medina?
Aye. Thank you, and you can't see it on TV, but I really want to, the council wishes to thank Mr. D. Martini for making your extra effort to be here today. Appreciate it very much. And I know this is your first budget, so we appreciate... I saw him today at city hall, and I said, is this what you, you do to approve a budget? But, you know, with your injury, but thank you for taking the extra time to be here. I can't tell you on a personal level, to the senior leadership team, to the city manager, to yourself, Mr. D. Martini, that the difference in the budget and its presentation, the more in-depth studies that we did, and looking at it very, you know, with great detail and a lot of questions, and not just doing it to do it, you really put a lot of heart and dedication into it, and your team did. So, if you can convey that back, and obviously, we still have some more work to conclude on it, but thank you to all. Conduct the business. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, we're going to have a, just a couple-minute break, and, and we will recess.